Couple of the special ones for budget workshop.
Make a motion to approve the past meeting minutes on Tuesday, August 27th, Tuesday, August 20th, and Tuesday, August 18th.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the regular meeting on August 13th and special on the 20th and 27th. Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Item two, or item three, claims in payroll.
Didn't have any questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? All in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Reports, manner? Julie?
Hi Julie.
Hi!
How are you?
Hey!
What's in your packet does a variety of different things. First of all, thank you for Jamie Norris joining our board. She attended the last meeting, went well. You'll also see on your packet, we have our refreshing of our renewal of our work comp liability. We stayed with the same company we had this year. We also had a state survey for assisted living. It had been five years, little different than the nursing home. Nursing homes every year. But we had ours in assisted living on the 19th and my report that we were deficiency free down there. Still wait for the fire marshal to show up. He's gotta be here in September, so we'll wait for him to show up. Our auditors were also here on the same day as the meeting, so I was able to provide, I call them the chicken scratches for ya. But this is just our Medicare cost report. This is an end of the year cost report, but it does show you that we are gonna make a small profit probably for the Medicare here, so that was great. You've also see that our budget is included, pages 13 through 17. Open for any questions regarding that. This is our good year with our Medicaid reimbursement. We always have a bad year and a good year. We're on our good year that started in July. But there's a lot of controversy right now with the Medicaid system and the thinking about changing the reimbursement program completely. If that does, they're thinking it could be up and going by January 1, which throws the whole budget purpose kind of out, because we could see easily a $20 to $26 swing in the positive side of how the government is thinking about changing it at the state level. So, do I personally believe that we will make it by January? No. The more realistic goal will be July, which I think's great, because that's when Medicaid already changes our budget and maybe all the ducks can be in a row, and then in July we should be ready to go next year. But that's up to senators and Governor Rickett and things like that to decide what's gonna get approved in that budget. Been talking to the senators quite a bit here lately and putting our two cents in regarding long-term care and assisted living, so. Questions?
Yeah, I've got questions in that. They're probably still synthesizing it, but the, I noticed on the budget and everything looked, you know, look, you can tell it's the good year, you know, you go through these enough. But you're way down on capital expenses. Are you just easing back? Are you not gonna do a whole lot this next year?
We've spent a lot of money this last year on everything and anything, I think, in the building, so I did purchase a couple extra air conditioners for assisted living this month, so you'll see them come out of last year's budget, so I hope that things continue to go well, but the minute I say that, something could go wrong, which as I'm talking, I have a freezer that's acting up, so don't be surprised, so. And besides that, this week is National Assisted Living Week, so we started doing some fun things for them and drilling out and cooking out and doing different things with them. And we had grandparents' Day on Saturday with our residents, so.
Congratulations on non-fiscioussies.
Thank you.
I know. That goes, so it's always nice.
Any other questions? Thank you. Officer Wells. And I'll let 'em know that the police chief is attending, the police chief and the fire chief of Region 11 is meeting with the new Region 11 Emergency Management, so there's a special meeting immediately tonight for all of those chiefs, so that is why Officer Wells is here.
Correct. Much obliged. You know, there's a couple exciting things that I can think of right offhand, but otherwise, you know, all right here in the report, so.
How did the duck situation turn out? The Stewart dog?
They got rid of the dog. The dog is out of town.
Personally, the residents got rid of it, or the police department got rid of it?
From what I understand, the residents got rid of it the next morning before police contact.
Okay.
If there are no other immediate questions, I've got a couple copies here I'll send back with the officer to look at with the department, but these are citations that we had to produce for police matters with a Freedom of Information document request that came in, and I read over the material, talked to Courtney, kind of set down the rules of what we had to do and when, and the police department furnished to Courtney a batch of reports about the dog situation and the Stewart dog. In the reports, it mentioned there were two citations issued. Well, I asked Courtney if she had her copies, that we needed to put those in the packet. She didn't have any copies. So, we asked the officers and Newman came up with these two tickets, which are attached to this packet. I would just point out to you, and I guess we aren't gonna deal with this tonight, I didn't make it a special agenda item, but for a license offense, they can do this $20 ticket, and if they pay it within five days, it's over, but otherwise, the city clerk's supposed to turn it over for prosecution. Well, the licensing ticket was issued on the 22nd of July. Courtney never received it, to my understanding, I think that's what she'll tell you. It said that was, the fine was to be $50. The code says the fine is $20, and they were given about 15 days to comply and pay, which never happened. But Courtney didn't know, and I didn't know, and the ticket laid in the police files. Then, again, a ticket was issued on the 10th of August. We had a copy of that. That was cited to be a $50 dog at large ticket, again, which they could pay downtown within five days, or it's to be turned over for prosecution, and none of that happened. So, I'm gonna be talking to them about this next week amongst other things. I mean, it's hard to understand how simple a couple of sentences that is. They can pay within five days if they don't turn it over to the prosecutor, and none of that happens. It just lays there in the office. We'll take those back to the office and have a little discussion of that if you would, and it'll be coming up further. Now, I suppose what should happen at this point is I should go ahead and file on these people on these two tickets. They've never paid their fine, and they're way outside the timing, so that maybe needs to be done, but the mechanism...
Before you file, I would appreciate if you would ask to see if they have been paid or not. Obviously, I wasn't the officer that issued the citations.
Courtney is the city clerk. She hasn't got any money.
They haven't.
Now, if they've paid it to the police station, then the police have become the judge, the jury, and the executioner. We can't be doing it that way.
Absolutely not. No, we, they're supposed to be turned over to city offices.
And they haven't been paid as of today. We checked and checked.
When I received those this week, that's the first I'd seen those citations. I didn't have a copy at the office.
Did you, which, which copy of the citation did you receive, the part of the copy?
This one that you have here.
Jared just gave me a copy.
Okay.
And only this, after that Freedom of Information request came in, and we said we gotta give them all the stuff. Well, in the reports, it said there were citations. Then Courtney and I knew there were citations until then, and we just had word of mouth.
I would ask you to speak with Bruce about it then.
I may do that.
Thank you.
Is that something that you can, you can maybe talk to all the officers about as far as turning those in within a timely manner?
I mean, I find it very hard to understand where the, it says in extremely plain language, if you issue one of these light-duty citations, turn it over to the city clerk. If it's not paid in five days, the city clerk turns it over for prosecution. Just none of this ever happens. We have all these lovely laws, and they get ignored.
You need to start.
Somewhat amazing. Well, anyway, we'll be talking about that, but that was just another matter in the Pigeon View Police Report.
Anything else? Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Economic Development, Susan?
Some good news to start my report off with. We had applied for a DED disaster housing grant at the end of July for half a million dollars. This was to assist homeowners in Pierce County that weren't able to fix their homes from the flood. Some people were denied by FEMA, some people had homeowner's insurance but it didn't cover everything, and a lot of people were just still having to wait for things to dry out, so they weren't able to address their home repair issues. So, we generated an interest list of about 16 people in July across the county that we could, we could help, so we went ahead and we applied for this grant, and they announced yesterday that we did receive it. So, in the coming days, we'll go ahead and put together kind of a who's, who qualifies and who doesn't. We did kind of put it on social media, and since then, we've gotten five new phone calls from people who weren't on the original interest list, so obviously, we have some need for that in our community, but the basic gist is we can help you with all of your interior, exterior home repair, bring everything back up to pre-flood stage, as long as you don't live in a floodplain, you have not completed your home repair, because we can't reimburse anything, and you don't make more than 120% of the median income in the area. So, for like, a married couple of two with no kids, that's close to 80%. A lot of people qualify for this program, so we'll put something in the paper for, it's too late for this week, but we'll do something next week with all the guidelines and where to pick up an application and how to get yourself qualified. Nened in Norfolk is gonna be our great administrator, so they'll handle a lot of that, but it's kind of nice for the area.
And how much did you say that was again?
$500,000. We estimated when we did the interest list that we could help 15 to 20 people, we averaged about $25,000 on the home, is kind of what we set aside. On the old community building, Evan's Construction is supposed to rebid, I'm not sure if he should have put the keys or not, but he's gonna rebid the project. We changed it a little bit, took the offices out, so he's just gonna rebid the open space as you, as it was with new carpet flooring and paint, and then I asked him to work up a separate bid for that stem wall that leaks water, just so you guys know, if ever you wanna tackle that, what that might be. I'll leave the DTR and the resolution for later, since we've got hearing on that. At the September Chamber meeting, I did present that Plainview market survey. Don't know how well it was received, but some. We have our community building, our $6.2 million community building, the steering committee, I'm calling them together this month. We're gonna meet, and basically what we're gonna address is, we know what the building looks like, we know where it's gonna go, we know how much it costs, we have a little bit of money raised already, and there's some grants that have been targeted to go after, so the questions that we're gonna ask are, who's gonna own it? Who's gonna run it? And who's gonna manage the facility from day to day? And then addressing how does this account of the campaign look? So, anybody who's interested in being on the steering committee, you guys just wanna sit in on a couple of those, just kind of see the direction that we're going, that would be great. RBDG, we have our L840 group coming together here in the next week, and they're gonna be reviewing an application for the Plainview Pharmacy. We're hoping to have all of the loans and everything wrapped up, so a full transition happens by December 1, with a new pharmacist in town, which will be really nice, and everybody's happy, and no one will have to apply for retirement.
You actually as, putting a feather in a hat, not going further, this grant was a big deal, and as members, Plainview's a part of it, you know, this was done by Pierce County Economic Development and the county and the cities of Osmond. We did talk about Hader a little bit today, as well as Pierce. This is a good thing. I mean, this is some of those things that FEMA let a lot of individual residents go, and to think that in the case of Plainview, we didn't have any, that's not true. We had several damaged homes in Plainview from the flood of March 13th that FEMA wouldn't touch, because they were too busy worried about other areas like Osmond and Pierce, and this is specifically for those that are not in a floodplain, because they had, most of ones floodplain have insurance, not all, but most of them do, so this is, this kind of fits some of the needs we might have, so. This was a big announcement from the governor yesterday, and this was pretty big for Pierce County Economic Development and Plainview. And for Susan.
Yes, I'm also PCED. Any questions?
Thank you. City Superintendent, Kurt?
Well, I'm gonna keep up on FEMA, yeah, I was checking around here a couple weeks ago and showed them all the damage and culverts, roads, advanced shell bar, you know, just, so we should get some money back, I don't know how much we're gonna get.
$2,000.
What's that?
$2,000.
Was it? That's it?
That's it.
Wow.
You can spend it faster than you can get it.
Anyway.
Where'd that come, I think we have, we're closer to $250,000.
Well, he was talking about van shell, right?
No, just...
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's one load of gravel, Kurt.
Yeah, so, got the pool wear eyes, got it out of my hair, got the GSI mapping done. We got it located, done, they'll finish up on the east half of town. Rust and Troy, went to a solid waste workshop in Wayne. I went to one backflow in Wayne. And had a little water main break on Labor Day weekend we had to work on, so. Other than that, I have no clue what's coming. Tomorrow will be another day. That's all I got, it's right now, I ain't asking.
Any questions? No, thank you. Administrator?
Well, it's just of time, I'm sure people didn't come here to listen to me. Brooke, did you get the combo hearing through the email? Okay. So, the, the budget has been put to rest. We'll have, you'll, I would like you to, in, not only this report, if you wanna do it later, that's fine, set a date. I have it set for Monday, from the emails I had gotten back, Monday at 7:30 here in the library, and 7:45 for the special request. There's two hearings that have to occur, so that's primarily what I've been working on there. There's several questions, but let's go on to the rest of the agenda and we'll come back.
Okay. I'd just like to take a couple minutes to address the city, the, I prepared some speeches, and I think it's best just to speak from the heart, but in light of some things that have happened in the last few months, obviously, now I'm gonna be the mayor, and we're gonna see the new council member possibly tonight, and in 133 years of Plainview, I just wanna remember the bad things, learn from them, remember all the good things, and move forward, and hopefully, we can all come together as a community and do that, so. And also, I'd like to just remember tomorrow, the 18th anniversary of Patriot Day, as a former dispatcher, current EMT, former firefighter, and the law enforcement and military, former military also, remember that, all the troops and the first responders serving. And with that being said, with the state legislature every day and other city council, I've asked my minister to come forward and just say a prayer tonight, just for the future city consulate Plainview. Pastor Buckley would come forward, please?
Thank you. I invite you to pray with me. Lord, thank you for giving us a new mayor, Brian. Thank you for our city and the privilege to have the blessing of peace in this community. Lord, you raise up leaders, not for pride, but for peace and progress. So, where there's confusion, give clarity. Where there's worry, give wisdom, the wisdom of Solomon, whose name means peace. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Do you wanna bless the room too while you're at it, you know?
I'll do that.
What's that?
You need to do your other one.
Oh, you're gonna do the other one, okay, perfect. Okay. Number five, discussion, action, appointment of new council member. I had eight applications, four that I could not consider, was the word of mouth on the street type of interest, and four official, and I had to do a lot of consideration, and again, hopefully, what's best for the city of Plainview, and this council will have to, with the checks and balances, they have to, a minimum two to one vote or three oh votes, so. I don't, do you want me to say all four names that were applied, or just?
Probably be well to at least announce the name.
Okay.
I don't think you have to conduct discussion ahead. You're entitled to make your nomination whenever you are ready.
The four, the four citizens that applied was Cal Flukie, Kareen Janovic, Tyler Seany, and Brian Alder, and my recommendation to the council, if they so approve, is Brian Alder.
I'll make a motion upon mayor's recommendation to appoint Brian Alder as the new council member.
Second?
I actually think it would be best, this is an unusual situation, but if there would be a second, the, the code says the council will vote on each nominee. I think it would be appropriate to vote. A second doesn't mean a yes vote, it just means it's coming to consideration. I think probably the, the motion should be seconded if someone could bring themselves to do that, although we can't order you to do so if you don't wanna participate in it, no one has to, and then the motion will die for lack of a second.
So, Monday at 7:30, we will add to the agenda this item again, and I will give the next name on my list.
Brian, can I make one comment?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
This process for appointing a council member, is that a state statute, or is it a Plainview?
I believe it's the state statute.
It's in the state statute, but it's very definitely in the code also.
To get what?
I'd just go by the Plainview code, it's the simplest version.
The thing I have a problem with is, when we started this, I asked to be, the council to be included in the process, because here's my problem, I don't know two of the candidates.
Sure.
I don't know nothing about them, I don't know them, and it's not fair to them, and it's not fair to us. I mean, if they're interviewed, we should be part of the interview, because otherwise, I mean, I'm sorry, but if I don't know nobody, I'm not gonna vote for them, I just, because I don't know.
I would agree.
And so, I don't know if we can change anything, or if we could do anything different to include the whole council? I mean, I don't know, I'm just asking.
You can set policy anytime you want. This is, statute only requires the minimum, and you've fulfilled the minimum, but...
Well, short of, short of calling a, you know, a special meeting or something for interviews ahead of this meeting, you could do that, and you could ask that they be presented and question them now, if you choose to do so, but if you're not going to get a vote in favor of this nominee, then it fails, and we move on, as Brian has said, to the next meeting, at which point he would submit the next nominee of his choosing.
Do they officially have to vote on them for that to happen?
Well, that was my suggestion, that there'd be an active vote, but effectively, no second, it's a no vote.
Is it the same thing? I just know, I remember you going through the statute at the last meeting, saying that if they got rejected as an applicant, but they're not even getting to that point, so I don't know how that would...
You can't force a vote. I mean, if it's a lack of second, that is the same as...
Yeah, but would he be able to put, put forward another person if there isn't even an official motion for the first one?
I think the practical answer is the same. So, you're, you're intended to be on the agenda at the next meeting, which is, when did you say?
Monday at 7:30 PM here.
Well, we have, we have to deem that no, no majority vote has been received, so we move on.
I'll do my oath then. Oath of office municipal officials, I, Brian John Schloty, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for the purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of mayor according to law and to the best of my ability, and I do further swear that I do not advocate, nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or for this state by force or violence, and that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or this state by the force of violence. So, help me God. Number six, discussion, action, setting special election for Plainview City Council.
Moose, did you wanna tackle this one?
Well, again, this is statutory, very clearly so. It involves council member Brookhauser. We don't have a quorum if she's not present in voting, so I, you know, and so long as it passes, and I think it's mandatory that it pass, and everyone has to agree that we go forward in the election at this point. I think you need to just take a general motion to set the election, that the date is already discussed with the county, and, and I think all, all presidents should vote possibly.
Conversation was had today, Bruce, and it doesn't matter to me, but I talked with Shannon, the official notice, she's already got the awareness, but the official notice tonight, based upon how we proceed, she didn't care if it came from the mayor, you, or I, as long as somebody, so I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, the letter probably should be dictated and sent down tomorrow, immediately.
Sure.
So, I mean, whoever, I mean...
I would think you and Brian could settle that and maybe both sign it, whatever, but just a letter to confirm that a motion was passed, depict the date and time. You've got your, somebody needs to announce the date and time.
I believe it's the second Tuesday of November, in mail-in ballot, is that right?
Yeah, and it's, the county clerk has indicated she's definitely gonna do it by mail, so we just have to get that on the record. It's not on the agenda for a specific date and time, I think you just need to get that into your motion.
Need motion?
I would do so, just to have a record that the council has approved and set, set the date.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we conduct a special election on the second Tuesday of November.
Which is November 12.
November 12, okay.
I'll second.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion passes?
You didn't do it, and I don't know if it's necessary, it's still the county clerk's preference, but she usually likes guidance, and she said something, that the mail-in is the way where, that she is going, but you might wanna confirm that, that you, you're not insisting it be anything else.
Because I believe she will mail the ballots out to all the registered voters, and then you have, I believe, until like four thirty or five of that day to get them in, or...
Right.
Right?
I think rather than go after that again, just confirm for her the date according to the instructions she's announced.
Sure.
She's already made that clear, that that's what she means to do.
Okay. Number seven, discussion, action, proposed TC Energy contract yard and RV site. I got fifteen minutes, otherwise I'll have to cut you off for a public hearing, so...
Very good. Uh, I'm gonna set up over here.
Absolutely.
We'll, we'll honor that time.
Yes, little statement though. Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
We have some handouts as well that we can circulate to those in the audience of, of the same information I'm presenting here, or similar information I'm presenting here to the, to the city council. Mayor Schloty, city councilors, Mike Bolton, city attorney, clerk, my name is Robert Latimer. I work for TC Energy out of Omaha, Nebraska, lived and worked in Omaha for about eleven years. TC Energy is the project developer of what's called the Keystone XL Pipeline, much talked about for the last ten years, on and off in, in the United States. And what my colleague Lisa is handing out is a, a map that shows the route of the pipeline in Nebraska, along with their existing pipeline, and then I have a similar map here that I'm showing to the, to the city council. Mayor Schloty, my role is with Trans TC Energy, it's, we used to be called Trans Canada, it's TC Energy, so you might hear me flipping around that a little bit. My role with TC Energy is the senior land representative with responsibilities for facility, non-environmental permitting and land acquisition for facilities. I have with me tonight a couple of coworkers, team members that have very certain expertise that are gonna support our project team, and I'll have them introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their role. Go ahead.
My name is Nikki Malenta. I will be assisting in dealing the permitting that would be required for the contractor yard and RV camp that's being proposed in Plainview. And as of right now, we are looking at a three hundred RV camper, temporary campground, and a contractor yard that would be adjacent to it. We, I have been in discussions with Mr. Bolton on requiring, or what would be required for permitting, and at this time, through looking at zoning regulations, we're looking at a special use or conditional use permit. So I have begun the process of kinda compiling some information to start that process. All the infrastructure that will be put on the site is temporary, and it won't be there for the new camp, or if the city decides that they would like to keep any of the infrastructure that's in place.
So, yeah, so Mayor, Mayor Schloty and city councilor, the, i- i- in order to support the execution of our construction plan for our thirty-six inch diameter pipeline in Nebraska, the, the Plainview area is uniquely cited to get workers going west on Highway twenty, out to Kipaha, Boyd, Holton, Antelope County areas that you see on the map there. And what we're proposing is to, to reduce travel time for those, for those workers, that we would, we would cite a temporary facility here, that we would follow all the planning and zoning regulations, and Nikki will work on that to establish a temporary workforce camp with RV sites and a contractor yard to stage materials for our future construction of the project, which, as a reminder, the state of Nebraska has approved this route to, to the Nebraska Public Service Commission, and recently, the Nebraska Supreme Court validated that route that the PSC chose in November of twenty seventeen. My colleague Lisa here will talk a little bit about her skills when it comes to a, a security perspective for, for workforce camp and contractor yard.
Sure, my name's Elisa Ladon, I'm the lead on security for the state of Nebraska for Keystone XL, so that's now through surveying and pre-construction movement, all the way through to completion of construction. So essentially, what we're looking at in particular for Plainview is from a security standpoint, is the, the contractor yard, which would contain equipment and things that are required for the actual construction, as well as the RV park, would be enclosed, it would be a scan in, scan out system, it wouldn't be something that anybody could access. There would be security twenty-four seven, they would not be armed security, they would be security guards. In the event that there's any issues, there would be an immediate call-out hierarchy, where we start and where we end as far as anything like that that would transpire. And all of that planning for that would begin once we were receiving the permitting and moving forward. So, right now, we're very preliminary, I can answer any questions you might have in particular to security, but that's what we're looking at right now, specific to what would be in Plainview.
Elisa is a resident of Nebraska, certified law enforcement officer in, from Fillmore County, and is our point contact for dealing with all federal, state, and local officials on law enforcement matters as it relates to our project. We take it really very seriously, protecting the public, our, our staff and employees and our contractors and our property as we work on this facility. But partnering with, with local stakeholders is really important, and that's part of Elisa's job in, in reaching out to various levels of state, federal, state, and local law enforcement.
So, guys, I got a question for security. Are your unarmed security guards, are they certified law enforcement?
They're not. The only ones that would be armed would be off-duty certified law enforcement officers.
Okay.
Which is what you see when we have out in the field with the, like, some, right now, and that's what would be out with the actual construction. So on the route, where construction's transpiring, those would be off-duty law enforcement officers. But at the actual site, no, those are security guards.
Okay. Are you talking about a, an RV park within city limits or outside of the city limits? Basically, I'm getting at it as a jurisdiction change.
Transition, sure, yeah. So, um, so I've already met with Pierce County Sheriff, I've gone over that with him. I'm aware of all of the law enforcement you have in the local area, you actually have quite, quite a few agencies within Pierce County. So, uh, as far as my meeting with the sheriff, I haven't gone beyond that. Obviously, once we actually have permitting and, and everything in place, I'll move forward from there, contacting your department.
Okay.
Why are you guys looking at putting it here when everything's west?
So let, so that's a great question. The, the proximity to Plainview being almost on the county line to Antelope County, and as you go, as you go, let's see, right here, we're, we're at the north part of Pierce, right, Pierce County? To get out, to get the...
South west part of Pierce, I wasn't, sorry.
To...
Well, I, I misspoke, kind of in the middle, so...
We're six miles from Knox County and two from Antelope.
Oh, okay, so let me, you guys still were putting it over there.
Right there, right there.
Right around there. The proximity to Plainview and the services that Plainview provides, and the ability to shoot out west on Highway twenty and get quickly to the areas that we're gonna construct our pipeline and pump station facilities is, is really beneficial. And, and the workforce, we found that the workforce that accompanies these pipeline contractors, a lot of them bring RVs, they, 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 it's temporary in nature that they would spend three, four, five months working on different components of the pipeline construction, and Plainview just happens to be a decent proximity to get out west to the pipeline. We look...
Have you presented this to any of the other communities west of here?
No. No, we cited Plainview because of its unique proximity and, and the ability to cite a facility and have that access to the west. There likely would be some workers staying in the communities in O'Neil and Neely and so on, but from a, from a location that's closer to the right of way, frankly, we looked at Norfolk, to, at, very closely, but it was gonna put more miles on our workers to get out west. And so the way that we're doing our construction spreads, that's, that's a length, a segment of pipeline construction, Plainview ended up being one of the better locations that we were able to, we, we were able to secure some land, we're finalizing negotiations with the landowner for, for the RV site, the contractor yard, and it's just on the edge of town here on Highway thirteen. And the zoning, we believe that we can work through the zoning process and obtain what's called a special use permit, following all the ordinances in place.
So I had heard that you actually applied for this in Royal, and it was denied.
No. We did not pursue a workforce camp in Royal. We have looked at some other staging areas for storing pipe and different things like that, we do have one in Antelope County, but not a workforce camp. There needs to be a certain level of proximity or services that, that our workforce can utilize, power, water, the ability to, to determine if we can haul some wastewater from, to the sewage lagoons and so on, those are all matters that we're working through with your city administration.
What would be the timeline for the project as far as setting up, how long would people be here, that kind of thing?
So it'd be one, one full construction season. Right now, we're in the pre-construction phase, we still have a few outstanding permits and some, those type of matters to work through, and we would be looking at a twenty-twenty time period to start construction. We would have to build out this contractor yard, RV site, again, salt temporary, put that in place, and then it would be into that twenty-twenty construction season. That's subject to change, though, depending on schedules and permits and...
I don't know much about construction, like, what, what would be a construction season then, like, wouldn't, does that run in different time periods, or...
Hard, hard to say, you know, roughly, if you started when things, you know, started drying out in the spring, depending, right? You guys know as well as I what that looks like?
I just know the terminology was foreign to me, so I'm asking what a construction season means.
So, weather dependent, that, that mid-spring time period to late fall before the snow lasts? That's when the predominantly most of the work would happen.
So you've got three hundred RVs, how many people is that?
So we're estimating, that's a good question, one point five average per RV.
And so are these families, or strictly men?
Typically, well, let's, let's, let's stay away from the man camp, type...
I don't think we should, because I think you missed, you renamed this, because I've been following you for ten years.
Sure. And, and what do you believe it should be called?
I believe it should be called what it is, a man camp.
So, we call it a workforce camp?
Yeah.
Because if, if you look at the men and women, if you look at the men and women that work at this workforce, it are workforce, because they have, we have women.
Yeah.
Very few. What's your ratio of women to men in your camp?
I think it's probably predominantly...
Four or one?
Men, but I can't, I can, I can't give you an exact ratio.
Well, you have pipelines all throughout, which you should have those numbers, what are they?
Yeah, I, we can get those for you, I don't have that number with me tonight.
Can you tell me a little bit about statistics on crime when your camps come around?
Lisa, do you wanna tackle that one for my crime?
Yeah, i- if you're looking for something that would be statistical, I, I imagine you could probably find that online, I don't, I don't maintain statistics.
I would like to get it right from your mouth today.
Yeah, um, so I don't carry statistics around with me, I don't know those statistics.
Gosh, you should come to a meeting with those things, 'cause we wanna know those things.
Okay, so what I can, what I can speak to is the level of security that we would have at a workforce camp here.
What sort of issues, why do you need security?
Rob, can I come back to you? Can you guys take, just pause? Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. At seven fifteen, it's a public hearing on slum and blight designation downtown revitalization. Susan, economic development again? Thank you.
Okay. So we're just talking about downtown revitalization for about six months, it's been on your report, we talked about it a number of different ways. Uh, we're getting ready to move forward. That process included evaluating all of the downtown buildings, I do believe you got a spreadsheet on that, where we kinda systematically went and looked at each building, just, I mean, in a real scientific way, just kinda eyeballed it and tried to fit into the definitions that they gave us. To do a slum and blight in your down, and then we polled our business owners, of which a hundred percent of them wanna participate in this. So basically, in order to access four hundred thousand dollars to revitalize our downtown, and this would be getting grant money to fix the exterior, windows, doors, roofs, siding, brick, on the interior flooring, electrical and plumbing, bringing everything up to code, and then finishing out upper levels, if there are businesses that would like to have upper levels done. We need to then formally say that twenty-five percent of our buildings downtown would be rated in poor or fair condition, and you guys have the defin, the definitions and the terms for that. And if we easily meet that, I think any small town in Nebraska could easily meet that category. We are not going for the state designation of slum and blight. To go for a state designation of slum and blight, we would take a lot more steps, and we would actually be asking the state to come in and, and declare this area slum and blight. We are not doing that. All we are doing for the purpose of this grant is we are meeting the national standard, and the national standard is twenty-five percent poor or fair condition. And we're saying that, yeah, we could say that's fair through Plainview, and you guys have that list, so, uh, you have a question, we more than likely will answer those. The justice here is four.
And you need the design, excuse me, you need the designation to get a grant, that's the point.
We need the designation to get four hundred thousand dollars to fix up our downtown. Without that, we can't access the money.
For those of you that have not participated in such a thing before, we've done this two or three times in Plainview, somewhat embarrassing and annoying to have to say a chunk of your town is slum and blight condition, but it always is necessary for tax increment financing, and it's effective for that and for some other purposes. And we've done it a couple times. That's how the street got built around the eggplant. I mean, up there at the time, it was probably more marginal for slum and blight than downtown. But you need to say that to just let the grant proceed, and I sure don't think there's any reason to not at this point. It's justified with the old buildings downtown.
Is public hearing, anyone from the community is welcome to speak for or against?
Yes. What's your plan to do exactly what that money, what's, what we do, what, how will that change downtown?
Well, the first part of this is accessing a planning grant, that'd be fifty thousand dollars. That's why we have this slum and blight today, to get a planning grant. We've spoken with a firm out of Carney, that we, Pierce is using them, and we've seen them do some good work around the state. This firm will come in and meet individually with every business owner, they have a historical architect on site, and they have building engineers, and they, every owner has a vision for their building, you know? You've seen DTRs where you go and every business is kind of the same color-coded weird thing. We don't want that, we don't want that cookie cutter look here. So this firm will work with every individual and develop a plan for your building. What do you like about your outside, what would you like to fix up about your outside? Are there signage or awnings or windows and doors, roof? Do you have brickwork that needs addressing? Storm drainage? Do you have concrete work in the front that needs to be addressed? And then on the inside, we can bring your flooring up to code and plumbing and electrical. A lot of these old buildings, you go up the upper level, that's knob and tube, or, you know, it can't be used. But you have, but there's a lot of buildings down here that have beautiful upstairs that we're just not being able to utilize. If we could bring the flooring, electrical, and plumbing to code up there, it wouldn't be that hard for those business owners to just finish it out, and now you have upper level living, or some other opportunity. So this firm will work individually with you, help you develop a plan for your building, develop a rendering of what your building would look like, and then, since they're working with everyone in town, develop a rendering of the entire downtown and what that's going to look like. Start to finish, this planning process is a year. So this time next year, we should be done with the planning, and we'll be applying for that four hundred thousand dollars, and then that money will come in. Because you, each individual business owner has a plan, now you have, we will cover anywhere between fifty and seventy-five percent of your project. Most communities have opted to do seventy-five percent covered by the grant, twenty-five percent building owner. I think that's a fair, you know, way to look at it, but, so we, essentially what you're doing is you're improving the, the condition of your buildings downtown, you're investing that money in your, in your downtown. And what we've found is for... Um, and what we've found is for every dollar invested locally in the downtown, seven dollars is the return. Um, so, you know, the only way to access that is to go through this process. Did I answer your questions?
Yes.
Does this involve money from the city to match or anything?
There is a match involved on the fifty thousand dollar planning grant. The match is ten thousand dollars and that's going to come out of our LB eight forty budget. Um, LB eight forty, as you know, is our city sales tax. A third of that revenue goes to economic development. Um, so we feel that that ten percent match is a pretty good use of our city sales tax dollars for something like this. Um, as far as the four hundred thousand dollar, yes, there will be a, a match from the city for that. Typically, ten to twenty percent. It'll be the next budget cycle, so we'll talk about it next year some more. Again, I, I would anticipate some of that to be coming from LB eight forty-two, so.
Anyone else?
Well, that's exciting. Thanks for working on that.
Yeah, I think it'll be nice. We're excited.
We had talked about the DTR, just to follow up, because I don't know. The DTR is through the program of the Department of Economic Development. Those are, some people will ask, well, you just did something like that downtown. That was through the Department of Transportation. Uh, and they were fully focused on the lighting that we have, the, the curb cutouts and the different streets that we put together. So we've done one and that's now getting some age on it. Now it's time to look at the buildings and go to the downtown renovation to just boost it up another step. We're, we probably should have went after this a while ago, but you only go after one thing at a time and trying to get the, the, do what you want to do.
I think the timing is perfect for this one. Um, you know, we spent last year filling those downtown buildings. Now we're full, with the exception of two buildings. Um, so this is a good time to go ahead and do something like that. DTR doesn't make a lot of sense if half your buildings downtown are empty. So, you know, we're full and I think this will be a good thing. Shows progress on our end.
Last call for any questions or? Can we need a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second, oh, sorry, one last.
Was that just on that topic or can I?
Just on this public hearing, yeah.
On that, okay, okay.
Second?
One second.
Second, Pam?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Okay. Discussion, action, approval of resolution number five eight nine, adopt slum and blight designation.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number five eighty-nine.
No second.
Second, any discussion? Voting, Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Pam?
Hi.
Motion passes?
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Rob. Thank you for that.
Uh, Mayor Schulte, councilors, other, other questions on our, our path board? For our proposed workforce camp, contractor yard, uh, and the planning and zoning process that we intend to see the follow up?
I don't know if I interrupted the discussion or, or you had answered it or not, yeah.
We took public discussion?
No, but I mean, I mean, I wasn't sure if I had interrupted when.
Yeah, well, when you talk about security, that you provide security. I know that you're probably concerned about vandalism to your equipment.
Yes, sir.
And your trailers. What other security issues have you had in the past?
Um, primarily when we address security, specifically when I address security in preparation for construction, as well as now ahead of time with survey, um, we're offering our personnel, staff and equipment security coverage. Um, typically, when we respond to security, it's issues about aggression towards us, towards our personnel, towards our staff. So to answer your question statistically, I can't give you a statistic today, so I'm not going to be able to appease your question. But, um, that's something that I'd be happy to get to. I can give you my card. Um, I'm not going to be able to find anything specific to Keystone XL. Obviously, we haven't, that hasn't happened. We haven't had that transpire yet. Um, but I can give you some examples.
Okay, so when you say this is primarily men, is that correct?
I didn't say that.
Did you say that, sir?
Ma'am, I, you asked the percentage of women in our workforce. And I said I, I couldn't give you that number.
Okay, in the camp?
I, I'm gonna suggest the majority of our workforce is male, but there's a percentage of females in that workforce as well. They're a valuable part of our team.
Yeah, that's not the issue whether they're valuable or not. I just want to know, are there children?
Uh, th- this is a, a primarily a workforce camp for workers that are, are spending. Uh, you know, our workforce spends six days a week, twelve to fourteen hours a day working. It's, it's not really a place, an RV camp is not really a place for kids to be residing long term.
So no school impact or?
The, these workers follow our projects generally along the, throughout the United States. And not only our projects, but other projects. And you might find some instances where, you know, employees, contractors will bring their kids along, perhaps homeschool them, perhaps put them in the local system. But I would suggest the majority of these, um, men and women are, are here on a temporary basis because this is a temporary construction project, much like the wind projects or building a.
Sure, I understand all about your project, but I'm more concerned about the impact it will have. And, um, if it was all good, I'd be all for it. But I'm more concerned about my family and the impact it could have on my family, my daughters, my grandchildren, the sex trafficking, alcohol consumption.
If I might make a suggestion, ladies and gentlemen, you're getting into topics that are for the hearings. This is an introduction to the concept. They're giving you a general overview.
Well, we just want everybody to have those questions in their mind.
And the topics for the hearings are yet to come.
We decide to have a RV park come to our town.
And there will be a hearing at the zoning committee level.
Well, I think it's.
They will present all their factors and details.
I think it's important too.
And there will be another hearing at the city council level.
Right, you've got a lot of hearings.
But this is not the hearing. This is just a general overview, so I don't, I don't think you can expect to get those details tonight.
But I, I, as Trans, as TC Energy, I do appreciate, and we, we, we come here wanting to hear that, those type of questions and that kind of theory about it. And s- the, the topics that you've brought up are ones that we hear about. Uh, we don't have all the answers or stats tonight, and, and I think you understand that. But, but that's, that's why we're here, to be transparent about the conversation we're going to have through other official meetings.
And not just that, a, a misconception, if I may, is that, um, you know, we're all bust here from Canada. Or we're from Houston. I mean, I'm, I'm a Nebraska local. I mean, Rob's a Nebraska local. We live here, we live in these communities. It's, it's not like we're not impacted by what's transpiring or what could potentially come to pass.
Oh, so you have an RV park in your town?
I do, yeah. I mean, it's not a TransCanada or TC Energy one, but yeah, there's.
It's like a vacation, holiday vacation RV park, you mean, or a construction park?
Well, it's utilized for, for different things, yeah. I mean, yes, throughout the, throughout the process of progress in our country. I mean, there's, there are workers that stay at RV parks throughout the, throughout the. But regardless, I mean, we, we expect and anticipate questions like this, so we're happy to take those as, as.
So next time you come, you'll have those statistics for us?
Certainly, yeah. I mean, hearing that, that your, your specific questions is, is helpful for us to understand the sentiments of what you feel.
And, and I know that you know, we can find those things out ourselves as well. And certainly at hearings, we'll have those specifics as well. And you're, we'll be happy to discuss how you re-fugiate them or not.
Yeah. So, you know, Mayor Schulte and, and, uh, your city administrator, Mike Colton, we, we visited with them a little bit. This is the, this is the start of a conversation and a formal process yet to come when we submit our permit. And it would be my view that it, this shouldn't be, and my hope, that this should be a successful relationship in a community that our workers will enjoy coming to.
Eating shop.
For a number of months.
Yeah.
And, and to, to leave some money behind, to enjoy the great facilities that you have in this community.
And thank you for, for starting to touch on that. What is the benefit? What will be the benefit target? Cause I think that's important to hear as well.
Well, and I, that's what I was alluding to before, and thank you Darren, is that I, it, to be the zoning administrator and absolutely just an objective line in the sand, because I, I know where I'm going with this, but I really do need to hear, I know Scott's out here, uh, his thoughts. Randy D's out here. I'll pick on anybody out there that wants to, but there ought to be something that's in your mind or what you're thinking. And if it is the impact, you know, what's the other side of it?
And, and when we, when we talk about impact, you know, I, I would invite you to, to visit with two, two unique communities, Norfolk and Yankton, where, where a, a large number of workers resided when we built our, our past pipeline project in two thousand eight, nine and ten time period. So Yankton and Norfolk had a significant influx of workers at that time. Don't, don't listen to my accolades of what those communities thought of TransCanada and our contractors. Go and visit the Chamber of Commerce in Yankton, the Chamber of Commerce in Norfolk. And, and I think you'll find, and it's historic, right? It's almost ten years ago that, that, that project went through with, with not too much fanfare. And I think generally a decent positive response after and through it.
Have you had a camp in a community similar in size to ours?
You know what, workforce camps, uh, we didn't have any workforce camps last time. Those, those employees live on the community or on, on, in the community, so to speak.
Which some of them will still as well, yeah.
Yeah. So did you guys consider O'Neill, since that's a bigger community?
We have, uh, there could be some people that reside in the community in O'Neill, but this, this is the location that we chose.
Because everything's west of here, so that's why I didn't know when it was a larger city, why that wasn't considered.
Holt County, Orchard, do you, have you had any conversations with them?
No, not, not in Holt County. We have talked with, you know, historically, we, we did look at a possible site north of O'Neill, but it wasn't quite in the right location. It was too far north for some of our other construction.
It wasn't about that resolution that they made to not have you.
No.
Anything to do with TransCanada?
In, in twenty thirteen, they made a resolution.
Right.
Uh, we're, we're now six years later.
Mm-hmm. Oh, so you think you're going to go back to them?
I, we need to deal with Holt County and, and they, and we will. And so the, you know, the, the opinion of your project is, is respected. The, the Nebraska Public Service Commission weighed in on the route of the pipeline after much review and public meetings in places like O'Neill and comments, uh, from across all, all of Nebraska. Uh, that was challenged, the Nebraska Supreme Court took eight some months to, to, to understand the validity of that decision. And they decided that this route is the best route in, for Nebraskans. And that's not our decision. That's gone through several other kind of forms of decision making.
But you, you still have an uphill balance, because I know that you haven't consulted with the tribes and et cetera.
Uh, we, we don't cross any.
But that's not, but that's not.
We don't cross any reservation land. I come back to the.
Yeah, okay.
But that's not, but you're, I, I know, I have some background. It's not for your, I'm just mainly concerned about the impact of Plainview.
Go ahead. Cal?
Uh, just a question on, you've got that many RVs there, that has to be a lot of sewer or water, trash, stuff. How's that handled?
So, that's a great question. And through our engineering consulting partners, Nikki is one of those partners, we'll look at what, what those volumes are, how much water do we need? Where do we get our commercial power from? How much wastewater do we produce? What, do we buy water through water purchase agreement, formalized through the city? We'll talk with the city officials about that. They'll make decisions and help us understand that. Where do we dispose of wastewater? Same type of conversations. Those will all be made using information that we, uh, build out with our engineering consultants.
So you would want to tie the, the Plainview city water and the city sewer system?
It possibly, yes.
Okay.
If, if there's capacity, and those, those are kind of technical kind of questions.
Questions for you too, so.
Yeah.
But that's all, I mean, we're in the preliminary stages. And that's, you know, like as I said earlier, this is just to kind of come to you and inform you of what is being proposed in the area. And we just want to get the conversation started, like we have tonight, and what the concerns are, so that when we come back with a permit application, that we can address those concerns and any additional concerns you all might have. And so, um, we'll work through the process.
Go ahead, Bryn.
Since Mike threw my name out there, I'll just say that I actually worked in Norfolk when the last pipeline went through. I manage a hotel, restaurant, bar.
Right.
And my revenue skyrocketed. Uh, tax revenue for the city was great. Um, of course, there's a lot of opposition pipeline, we know that. But this is good revenue for the city. It's going to be good revenue for everyone here, tax revenue, it's going to be great. You're going to have up to five hundred people here that aren't going to take care of our housing that we currently have. And they're going to give us money for the city, give money to the tax, you know? It gets good all around. There are going to be some issues opposite, but I think this is good for the community. Uh, they're going to buy gas at Casey's at all the gas stations, they're going to build new kitchens, they're going to buy food. Everyone here that owns a business is going to see, uh, potential revenue for this. And in turn, those people are going to pay taxes, which is going to the city.
So you do, you don't bring in your own fuel for your?
You know, we're still working through our, our contractor, I, I, I'm, our contractor, who, who have to fuel their large equipment.
They're not buying that from.
You know, those are details that we need to work.
And your own kitchens?
What's that?
Do you have your ki- uh, your own onsite kitchen?
There'll be maybe a dining hall, but there's not going to be.
Gotcha.
Just because of the facilities in Plainview, that, this is a little different setup than some of our other temporary workforce camps. You guys have the infrastructure here, kind of like Norfolk. You have restaurants, you have gas stations, you have groceries. I've been permitting in other states too, where if they don't have that infrastructure, so yes, we've had to bring in facilities so that our, our workers aren't having to drive long distances.
Right.
So, I mean, it, right now, if there's no set off, like building setup that we have, it's, the city is open to having folks come into town and get their groceries to use your restaurants. Then why would we need facilities like that?
Excuse?
Since the land is outside of, uh, Per- or Plainview, have you talked to the commissioners yet and what are their feelings?
They don't have any say in it.
No, is it the transition zone?
So I.
Extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's one mile outside the city and that, and I've talked to the zoning.
Where's the, yeah.
It's, uh, right south of where Joe Pierce's.
The old Max Cope.
The old house that was out there, that he cleared out all that trees. If you go straight south, it's a patch of land that Jim Ashoff owns. I mean, it's all public knowledge, so.
The, the, uh, I, I have personally spoken with the chair of the Pierce County Commissioners to let them know that we're working with the city of Plainview.
Go ahead, Susan.
Um, access to the site? Where would it?
That needs to be determined. We, we recognize today, there, there is not good access. So if we're accessing off the state highway, we'd have to deal with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for a formal access.
Right. Also, you said that workers would work twelve to fourteen hours. Um, does it, do you have them much time then to be in town to use the services that we have available?
Uh, you know what, so, you know, I casually inquired about, you know, how, how long does the, the, was it Dollar General? They're open till nine o'clock, I think. You know, maybe, maybe, maybe they catch it at the tail end, or maybe some businesses choose to stay open a little longer to, to take advantage of that, right? You know, our, our workforce, again, men and women, um, they work long days. They have to adhere to very strict, uh, safety standards that include no tolerance for, for, um, behavior related to alcohol or drugs. They're, they're fired. If there's any indication that they're not fit to work, they're done. And they lose a very well-paying job with great benefits. They're off the project.
Do you drug test them?
Absolutely.
Kind of regular?
I, I, I can't talk about the frequency. I don't have that. But certainly, the, they, there's a, that type of workforce is subject to drug testing, drug and alcohol testing. But first and foremost, they have to show up fit to work or they're not working on the project. And they're done. That, that kind of historical behavior, bad behavior, is not tolerated with the projects that are industry, period, undertakes.
Brooke?
Uh, I look forward to many, many hours.
I look forward to many, many hours of hearings, just make sure everybody listens to them, it's one of my favorite things. Can you give me, I have like other things to do. Do you have a timeline for when these permits will occur, so we know when these hearings are maybe going to be? Month, six months, two months, two days?
No, no, the zoning board will probably meet within the next month, the next 30 days.
Okay, we're gonna publish those, make sure...
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
I can post them, and we're gonna make sure everybody, everybody's gonna see this.
But, you know, the one thing about zoning, I mean, I, I do need to say this and that, we'll go to the zoning and that, but that's not a, uh, you know, I'm trying to be very objective here, but that is not a Trans-Canada issue, it either is allowed under the zoning, and the zoning board will make their recommendations ultimately to council, or it's not allowed. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty simple process.
And is it a special use or a conditional use?
It'll probably be a special use, special use fits the need a little bit better, they, it actually could fall under both, they're both allowed under Tran-, or the TA, Transitional Act.
Could we theoretically set conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
So the board can do that, but the zoning board will do that and recommend it to the council, the council have a hearing, approve or deny.
I guarantee you, and we talked about, I've talked with Robert about this too, I guarantee you, the zoning board will have conditions.
Weeks from now, months from now?
Whenever they submit the permit.
So, we...
So, again, first part of the, the conversation, let you folks know what's up.
Sure.
Second part, prepare our submission through our engineering consultant, submit to the planning and zoning, then that kicks off the process that involves the folks that wanna be involved, really, and, and, and then we, we end up with a decision at the end.
Sure. As long as it comes through our committees and the people we know, I look forward to it.
You know, we are here to honor local ordinances, and, and in some cases, it's, it's not an easy hill to climb, doesn't mean we don't climb the hill, right? We carry on, and, and that's, that's what we're gonna do as a company. Uh, you know what, we're, we're taking up some time here, I, I wanna be, I don't wanna, I don't want the Trans-Canada discussion to dominate tonight by any means, but, uh, any other questions for us as we kind of wind up?
If you don't get it here, we're going to try, so we can go there.
Uh, you know, so we did, we did seriously look at Norfolk, uh, as an option, but that was just a bit far for our workers and, and the safety of our workers to, to, we wanted them closer to the work, so that's why we chose this location.
So, but that didn't answer a question.
What's that?
Where, if you don't get an okay here, where are you going?
Well, we'll tackle that when we get to that decision.
It doesn't matter at all, it's their business, it's not any of our business, move on, move on, hearings.
Rob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know you got a long drive back, so...
You know, I, I guess I'd like to say too, I just think it'd be fair to your workers to stereotype them as sex trafficking drug addicts.
Did we do that? We did not do that. We did not do that.
We have alcoholics delivering this out.
Okay.
We have alcoholics delivering this right now.
You say you deal with people that do not meet your high standard.
Thanks, Doc.
Believe you when you tell us that.
Number nine, or number eight.
That probably wouldn't meet that standard, but we still continue.
Dr. R.
And you better believe the moms were concerned too.
So anyway, I, I guess I, 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 I thank you for bringing this opportunity to us, and we'll go through the process, and the council may get this in.
Number eight, discussion, action, updates to water meter system.
Kurt, you wanna try handling this, or just, uh, I mean, go ahead, you, what you found and where you're going?
Yeah, we, uh, we're just gonna try to update, uh, handheld and stuff like that, what we got, instead of going through the process of...
Come on, you're a doctor, let's go.
Finally got, here is some detail, and I think Courtney got a last bid on it this day.
They got it today?
Probably less than $10,000, instead of $300,000, whatever, so, this should be viable for 10 years, hopefully.
Let me see that stuff, and then we'll...
We have to update that.
For melon.
Yeah, it's just, uh, getting a new, new system, and everything that we got in there now will work with the new system, so.
It's great.
Sounds good.
It's great.
Thanks for saving us some time.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Number nine, discussion, action, oh, sorry, discussion, action, approval of LB840 signed recommendation, Plainview Community Housing for $100.
This one's pretty cut and dry, um, our low-income housing unit asked for a new sign, I think the sign they had was from the 70s, or perhaps original.
I think it said, yeah, original when they built it.
Renee actually wrote a check for it, and I said, submit that, so, uh, LB840, uh, when they met last, they approved that, so we just need your blessing to go ahead and issue that check.
It probably shouldn't behoove me to sit there and just, and I don't want to throw a monkey engine to it, because I'm for it, so I'm gonna recommend that you pass this, but it is a quasi, uh, instead of a business, it's trying to work with a housing unit, we've not done that before. The recommendations there from the LB840 board, it's, it's, you've got my recommendation, but it is uncharted signage territory.
Right, I think their thoughts should be in the minutes from that meeting, um, again, it's a USDA project that from the 70s, um, the sign was original, as we work on notifying Plainview and moving forward with all these other things, that just was kind of a natural step to us, so, uh, it wasn't a lot of money either, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the LB840 signed recommendation in the amount of $100.
Second? Second, Bob, Julie?
Aye.
Uh, Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council.
Thanks.
Number 11, city attorney comments, workers' compensation litigation report and discussion added 9/6/19.
There's material pending now in the Workers' Compensation Court in Lincoln, and I just thought the whole council and perhaps the public needed to be, to have an understanding of what's out there. Chief Bruce Houston has filed a lawsuit against the city in the Workers' Compensation Court based on an injury, uh, that he documents as back in November of 18. Uh, there's a petition filed in August of this year with the Workers' Compensation Court, and the Workers' Compensation insurance people have filed an answer. I think, uh, strategy really needs to be left to the insurance people, I, there is little point in my spending much time on it, that there are experts out there that do this, and they're paid by the insurance company, which is a good thing from the city's standpoint. So there's nothing really to decide tonight, I just wanted you to be aware of this exists, and, uh, it'll be dealt with a new course with, uh, the people that are in charge of doing so. I won't be doing much other than an occasional phone call, probably.
When was the petition filed?
Petition was filed August 21st of 19. And that's all I have on that, if you have specific questions, I can try, but I don't think details really get you very far right now.
How long do they take to go through, versus?
The answer date has already approached, and I think the, uh, insurance company folks have filed an answer on behalf of the city, and other than that, I have no advice on how long it'll take to come to hearing. Frequently, we are spoiled in small counties and small communities for seeing these things resolved fairly quickly, and frequently they're not in the city.
Is hearing in Lincoln?
Probably.
Was anything reported at all in November or December?
No.
Anything else, sir?
That's really all I had.
Thank you.
I would, I guess one other thing, I would caution everyone to understand, if, if you're gonna deal with this special use permit business, get out a copy of the zoning book, or have Courtney run you two or three pages, the process is very much laid out in that zoning code, on what they need to comply with, and what they should need to prove to qualify for a special use permit. So, that should really be the checklist and the criteria. I know by the nature of the business, we're going to get into social and ethical and what's wise discussions, but from Plainview's standpoint, to some extent, we need to rely on the zoning code and the criteria in the zoning code to make these decisions. On the other hand, it is a discretionary decision, and all the other factors come to bear, uh, when you're thinking about that. Keep that in mind, make sure everybody's aware of what's in there, and what they are supposed to try to prove to make it work.
Is that something that you can make available for all of us?
It's at the office, if anybody ever wants to see it, I can bring you a copy on Monday.
Could you, that'd be great, thank you.
Courtney, there's the, there's the section on special use permits, and then there's a separate page of criteria, it's referred to in the book, Table 12.1, I think it says.
And they have to.
But it should have at least the special use page and the criteria page, and then you'll have a pretty good picture of how it's supposed to happen.
This is in our books we've got now, or is it?
No, this is the zoning code.
Could you make me a copy too, Courtney?
I'll just email you guys.
Okay. That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you, on the process wise, it's, it's, you need to understand your role in the whole thing, I think that's where it gets kind of messed up. Uh, this has been done a long time before, and Bruce and I have gone over that, the zoning board will make a recommendation, one way or the other, after they go through it. Uh, you do not have to abide by the zoning board, uh, zoning board could say yes, and you could say no, they're gonna go through the details of the checklist, that's not your job at all, but to have awareness, when you become the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board, the final, uh, say in it, that, that's when you'll get the recommendation from the zoning that you've appointed, so.
Well, and I, I think the council has the ability to make additional requirements.
Oh, absolutely.
And there could be a motion, for instance, to approve or disapprove because of this or on these conditions, and add or subtract what the zoning board has recommended.
Opake barriers, uh, things of that nature, that maybe the zoning board didn't think of, you know, you certainly can add conditions. Last time we went through this was the infamous, uh, irrigation unit for Ray Pendergast at the time, and I think the zoning, and the Board actually did do a good job of, um, laying down what nozzle heads, sprinkler heads needed to be, and, uh, all the things that the council wanted, so.
I think the last time one happened in the, uh, extra judicial zoning district of Plainview, it was reaching out to the state shed out by my house. And I went to the hearing and said, make them plant trees around the thing, we don't wanna look at their machinery in their buildings all the time, and you'll notice there's a nice little row of trees, I think they actually planted plastic trees, it's been about 20 years, and they're all about the same height.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, council comments, Bob?
I would just like to make a little brief comment about this Trans-Canada thing, and, you know, I understand the economic side of it, but I also want people to realize the other side of it, it's not all roses and perfume, like everybody states, and they state, there's an other side to it, go online and research it yourself, don't take what anybody says for granted, research it online, that's all I got to say, there's two sides to it, it's not all pretty either, so, thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
I don't have anything.
Pam? Public comments? Had a quick...
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I didn't see your hand.
I just, I see that your citywide cleanup's coming on the 21st and 22nd December. I was wondering if it's possible, if letters could be sent to the homeowners of the people who are out of city ordinance compliance with the junk in their yards, specifically, if they don't get the papers, they might not know that, and like, for instance, the overstuffed sofas that are on front porches, if there's somebody that's maybe disabled or unable to get that off the porch, get rid of it, if there was a way that we could see that they get help with that on that day? Because I know that there's quite a few houses in town that are out of city ordinance compliance, that's one thing. Also, on my block, there are, there's an increase in kids playing on a block, we've got a big family to the south of us, we've got lots of kids who come home on weekends to visit their grandparents, a lot of little kids playing and going down, and we were, I know a few years ago, I asked about getting a caution children sign for our street, um, where there's no stop signs on that street, people are not going 25 miles an hour, I can tell you that, um, and I would like to request one of those signs be put for the safety of the children. And the third thing, I was reading the ordinance online last night about the jake breaking trucks, and I saw in the book that it's $500 per occurrence if they're caught doing that, I hear it at least three times a day, and that's like $1,500 we could be making daily. You know, if we need money in this town, why don't we start enforcing that noise? That's all.
Thank you. Go ahead.
A question for the council, uh, on last meeting's agenda, there, uh, was something about the exec session for police disciplinary action, obviously that was tabled, I just wondered where that was sitting.
It has not come back to the surface yet, it seems we have a lot of things on the book, it's not gone, and there will be something coming, but...
I believe the next step that you said was a letter.
Not here now, it was rather my thought that it would be well to have the full council seated and aware before that any disciplinary action was undertaken, so that's kind of where it stands.
Okay, I believe you said the next step was a letter though, is that correct?
The next step is a letter.
That hasn't been...
It has not happened yet.
Okay, I would think that a letter wouldn't need a full council, right?
Well, there's very close time requirements between the letter and the hearing, and something has to happen.
Okay, there has to be...
And we don't know what, you know, what we've got for timing until we have a council, so it's, it's just coasting for the time being.
Okay, is there, was the specific requirement for the hearing between that and the letter?
Uh, I have to ask within 10 days, and the hearing has to be within 14 or something like that, so it's rather tight, and, uh, not knowing exactly when and how things are happening here, it just seemed inappropriate, but it's not gone.
Anything else? No, go ahead.
Like Mitch Southern Carroll mentioned about speed on 13th, there, uh, by time they hit our, or when the blocks outlaw, 35 probably or more, is it possible to get one of these radar signs like up there relatively cheaply, easily?
I don't know the price.
Five grand.
Five thousand.
Five grand, so there are a lot of kids all the way up and down that street.
I know there's two stop signs on my road, and people blow through them all the time, and there's trucks that jake break right beside my house, and they shouldn't need to use a jake brake if they're abiding by the speed limit, but, so a stop sign, I wish it would help, I don't think it would.
And I know we probably can't get a stop sign on our street because it's a hospital street.
Correct.
You know, if an ambulance needs to go through safely, uh, but, but at least if we could get those caution signs, and maybe get an officer to sit there a few times and actually give out some warnings or tickets to these people, I'd, I'd bring you sandwiches and...
There you go, Tyler.
I understand what you're saying there, and, and I know it has been stated in the past, you sit there in a bright white patrol car, and more than likely, everybody, now I will say that we, along with Nebraska State Patrol, have done speed enforcement on the streets before, they have a radar unit, which is, um, a handheld, you know, laser, we've got radar in our vehicles, we don't have a handheld radar, we don't have a handheld radar. What that allows you to do is step outside of your vehicle, you know, pipe line tree or something, exactly, like that, you know, in order for us to run speed, you know, enforcement, we need our vehicle, we need our radar cones to be pointing at the vehicles.
Is there a speed limit sign on that street? I don't believe there's...
I know, as soon as you turn, there's one.
Right away, by Family Dollar.
I think there's only one though. I think there's only one, though.
When you pass your, you know.
Well, right when you turn by Family Dollar, when you're going around a corner, you're probably doing 3 miles an hour.
Right.
By the time they get to 3rd Street, they're doing 40. And I'm not exacting.
No, I believe you. I can only remember one that's...
...of their, give a, of the warning tape that you sold. Kind of, it was sold out for a while, but it started to go back to, I think, about two, three years ago.
If the word gets out that tickets are being given.
Unfortunately, I have to request that, you know, systems for, you know, for the proper equipment to really catch people left. Like I said, I can sit out there, you know, it's funny to sit out there and fireball or even stand or out on West Street, you know. Everybody, you know, you sit out there, like, oh, yes, everybody, you know, obey it for the most part, you know, I mean, give or take.
Well, that's safety for the minute, then.
Unfortunately, I can't be everywhere all the time.
You don't make grant money to buy these signs because that seems to have helped, I watch trucks go through here 45 mile an hour and fall into town 45 mile an hour. But since they put those signs, it seems like that's slowed them down going in, so.
It was a good investment.
Tyler, does your, Graham might be a cheap child's life. Does your unit have to be facing the traffic or they have to?
Be out front and rear doors.
Coming heard you or coming from behind, but you have to be facing?
The layout of radar units work.
Facing the same way that the traffic is traveling. You have to be.
The way radar works is the same thing as me speaking to you right now. Goes out, hits you, bounces back.
But can you do it from the side? Can you do it from the side is my question.
Absolutely not, no.
You have to be facing the same direction as the traffic. What is one of the radar guns that can pick up better cost?
You're talking about handheld?
Yeah.
It depends on if you want to go with radar or LiDAR. LiDAR is more expensive, but it's also...
How much?
A conference, I think I looked at them two years ago, a conference, and they were anywhere from 3 to 5,000, I want to say.
Can you give us some quotes?
Yeah, just five of them.
My suggestion?
Conference is coming up again in October here.
Okay.
Rather than putting up a flashing sign all over town, one done.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
The kids blow through that stop sign right in front of our house. I asked Brian yesterday, I had a little conversation with him, real brief, and we had recently went to Minnesota and we went through a town called Windups, Minnesota. And they had stop signs that had the LED, LED lights all the way around it. And we stopped at a convenience place and there happened to be some officers there. And he said that has helped their awareness where stop signs are, you know, running through them, speeding, all that. I would ask that everybody go sit out here in front of my house? Well, not in front, because you're taking it. You're supposed to, by the time, okay. Yeah, you can sit by, but I'm like...
Yeah.
I've seen kids almost hit. And I have three grandkids that go there, you guys. And it is very scary. I yelled at two children from this community this morning. They ran through this stop sign going towards, it's right in front of Methodist Church. They blew through that and they blew through mine, it zoomed around the corner, it parked and jumped out.
Is it morning or afternoon?
It's both. It's both. It's all day long. Guys, we have a stop sign there. It's there for a reason. Obey it. You're gonna kill somebody.
Can you, she said they're like a solar thing and then it's...
Yeah, it's all solar.
I've already seen them, priced them, so.
How much are they?
They're gonna be right around the 2 to 3,000.
Each?
Yep.
Imagine.
They're not just a stamp on, they're just not...
No, no, I didn't mean that. They...
They're a specialized sign.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they go in and, and some states have them, but I really don't think about...
We're not good enough for to have that here to...
No, we couldn't.
See, by you're going, "We could," that's it, that those three kids that I send to school over here don't mean crap.
No, it won't be my decision, it'll be the council's.
Keep in mind, there's a big difference between making them aware of the sign and punishing them for not stopping.
Enforcement is a big issue, too.
They can still blow through the sign, even if they see.
You know where I'm going now?
Yeah, so there's got to be a solution.
Right.
Or do we just throw it in the air and say, "Why don't we?"
Here's the secret of the whole thing. This goes with the children playing and I wasn't gonna get too animated tonight, but I get a little frustrated a little bit. If you, we can put any sign you want. We can put children at play, we can do everything you want. Tyler knows as well, I'm not picking on him, but if you don't enforce what you have, you got crap. And any, any zoning or any ordinance that we have in this town, if you don't enforce the ordinances, we got crap. So, why even put ordinances in there if they cannot be enforced? This is the frustration that I have as an administrator and I am fed up with it on several instances because every ordinance gets ignored. We don't have to have these vehicles, unlicensed vehicles. There's easy answers to this. And when I sit there and come up and try to get something taken care of, I can't because the process slows me down. And I just went through the state right now to sit there and take care of zoning. I may call Tyler and sit there and say, because it is, you know, the, on King Street, they're done. They don't have to be there. It should be a, a city administrator, zoning administrator, Bruce Curtis and the officers. It's written in the state statute. And I just got told the other day, not by Tyler, since I'm not picking on him, that police cannot enforce zoning ordinances. And I just found out from the state statutes, they can't. Always could and never has ever been ignored. And I don't know why this is. I'm frustrated about the level of being a city administrator whom you pay to sit there and make these things happen. I like Plainview. And I'm tired of being a Plainview, being sitting there and shoved into a backseat on a lot of things, okay? If you want me to sit there and do anything, that's why I'm with you on the, I'll flash every damn light there is in Plainview. Does not mean anything if it's not being adhered to or enforced.
Okay, on King Street over here by the Masonic Temple, it says, "No parking from 8 to 5 p.m. residential parking only." I brought it up to Tyler before.
When I did speak to him.
I have addressed it with you.
Yes, you did. And I went up there and looked at it and yes, they've parked along the entire side.
And there's a handicapped, there's a handicap side that's right there. And every day since school has started, that kid is almost parked in that same...
I know exactly which kid it is, too.
Yes, I do, too. And it...
And he parks in the handicap parking every single day.
And that, isn't that a fine?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, why isn't there...
Why isn't that taken care of?
I did speak to him today.
God, that...
Tyler, thank you.
I, honest to God, I did. I spoke to him today and I spoke to the person that had the vehicle behind him. I said, "I, I'm not making excuses for the kid that's parked in the handicap stall. Maybe we shouldn't paint some blue lines there also."
I agree.
You know, Shelley, I spoke to you about it.
Yes, we have talked.
Well, and I think the kid, he's, isn't he young? He's a freshman or something like that?
No, he's not.
No, he's not.
Oh, is he a senior?
No, he's...
Older. That's all I needed to know. I, I know, I didn't know what age he was.
Okay. Next. Go ahead.
Mike, how about installing those rumble strips, you know, both stem shell, that would have, you know, hold down some, wouldn't it?
It is, it is an answer that has been used. Kurt and I would have to talk about it. A lot of people that have put those in have found they, they are not as good of a deterrent as you would think, although I will tell you, a hater, it slows them down a little bit.
Those aren't just rumble bars.
Yeah, those were, those were, those were flying. I, I just don't, I mean, I guess I'm just gonna finish it off with this. I don't know why, with the happenings of the last month and a half, I am, I'm fed up with a lot of things and I don't know why that the city and the city staff, whom I'm very proud of and that, have to be punished or sit there and be lumped into a lot of things that we shouldn't have to. I'm embarrassed. I've worked for 30 years in management through for-profit, nonprofit, with the Center for Rural Affairs, so I, I can tell you, you know, the TransCanada, Carolyn, I can tell you that, too. And now working with the government, I'm embarrassed that I have to have a lawsuit. I'm embarrassed. And that's a city administrator. And I absolutely, I'm speaking from a professional standpoint, I was embarrassed. And I don't know why I have to hold back and sit there and do that. I've already spoken with the attorneys, but I'm embarrassed. And I would think the council, and I don't want to pick on Pam, she's right here, but I would be embarrassed to find out that they even knew about it, okay? This is something you don't want to sit there and you shouldn't have happen in your communities. It's an embarrassment. And I'll stop it with that.
Well, and I just would like to add, do a little thing, that if we can't enforce the problems we currently have here in our own community, we certainly don't, do not need 500 more temporary citizens to pull this. And, yeah, talk, talk about their security, but I can tell you, I have been to every hearing and testified and done my own research on the last 10 years on the way they work. And I could have answered every single question that I asked them tonight because I know the answers. And I just want you all to be very aware of what we could possibly get into. And if you think our police are overtaxed now or underachieving now, whatever the word is, you haven't seen nothing yet.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the land they were talking about is outside city limits.
Doesn't matter where it's at, when they come to town, you do it.
No, I, I understand where you're coming from, that's not my concern with why I asked them what they did is because if they...
You can sell hamburgers in my oven and it's not gonna be worth what you're gonna go through.
Well, that's why I asked them if they had certified law enforcement for security because if they're not certified, they can't arrest. So, if they can't arrest, then that is some local law enforcement.
Yeah. That leaves it all on you guys, Tyler.
The county.
County and that with State Patrol, absolutely.
County and State Patrol.
But you guys are here in town.
Yep, they can.
You guys are...
We assist.
Yeah, but I mean, the problems are here and you're here.
Any other public comment?
On my street in front of my house, all the way through this corner, for sure, I know, whatever street this is, Pike Street, all the way past my house, it says, "No parking while school is in session." So, cove 3:10 every afternoon. We got moms and daddies picking up their kids. My driveway gets blocked. I've, I've addressed it with Mike before. He's trying to help me with it. I'm pretty, you know, he's pretty genuine about it. I take care of the grandkids on Monday and Tuesday. One of my grandkids is really allergic to peanuts. If I needed to get out fast, it's been proven, they don't like to move because they want to be there at 3:10 in the afternoon, picking up their kid at 3:42 in the afternoon. You could draw me a map, you could send a map home with your kids. This street says, "No parking from, while school is in session." Park all you want during games, I'm glad to see that. Do not park in front of my house. That is, there's a sign there, there's a stop sign. The buses, when the buses come up to load kids in the afternoon, they have to swing way out. And if there's anybody walking in that imaginary sidewalk, uh, too bad bus just hit you because they gotta get around all these parents that have to be there at 3:10, 3:15, pick up their kid at 3:42. It says clearly, how do you enforce, okay, there's that stop sign, if you put a blinkie in one there, you got 10 cars that are lined up. And in my driveway, would anybody else put up with that crap? I've lived here 10 years. That's bull crap. I, I've had it. I've talked to Tyler, I've talked to Mike, Brian, I've talked to you. You guys, it just, it doesn't make sense. We have laws on the books. We have signs out. It irritates me.
Going off of what Shelley just said, when schools changed what they were doing for pickup, was anything said and/or granted to, you know, traffic's tight up there. It always has, it has been since I was in school. Was there anything said or, you know, did the city come up with anything and say, "Hey, during this time, you know, the pickup line that, as it is," what was, was suggested to the city when that was happened or it just happened?
It just happened.
Only thing we did was retroactive and that was, you see the multiple stop signs, which were somewhat made fun of when they were put in because they were too many. And, yes, there is a thought process that stop signs become too many and people ignore them, but I think those stop signs were new. The stop signs were being put in. Now, enforce, I mean, like I said, they just, there was a lot of things said about those stop signs being put in.
I'm talking more along with Shelley's, because...
And, and her part.
Your part, you know, I'm trying, because I don't like it either because like she said, the school bus now is in the middle of the street and then the imaginary sidewalk to the side.
Is this something that you can, Mike, talk to Darren about?
I can.
And have him put that, he does his weekly phone call to all the students' parents and everything to remind them that there's no parking.
A map was sent home with all the elementary students on how you're supposed to pick up kids. Well, that's, didn't alleviate anything, that, so they know how to pick up kids.
Another thought, remember that, the Masonic Lodge folks, I believe, were okay with the sidewalk up on the curb.
Yeah, why did they put a sidewalk?
And if this is so congested, perhaps this sidewalk in the street is a dumb idea. It was done on the basis of, "Let's not spend the money, look, this would be free. We can put up a sign and paint a stripe." But if it's causing congestion and making it worse, why not fix it? You could put up a sidewalk, put in a good big sidewalk.
Before they built this library, it should have been a requirement that sidewalks were if they were put in all the way through.
From the school to the...
Yeah. Might be, we're the...
Yeah, no. Look at, I stopped there.
He would charge the labor.
There's the better answer.
Yeah, there was, that's why.
Yeah.
One called, who cares, we want?
Well, that, I...
That's the only, if you're told.
I could be wrong, but I think they would get charged the cost of that.
Yeah.
So, as a property owner, I mean...
Yeah, it's expensive, but...
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
What can we do about that parking in front?
I think we need to...
Where it says, "No..."
I'll, I'll talk to them.
Megan?
Yeah, you might have missed it, I came a little late, I was, missed the time there. I wanted to say something about the, um, um, the elementary library, children's library and...
Oh, that's next month. That's next month.
Next month, okay.
Yep, no problem.
Megan, you did fine.
I just wanted to make sure, right?
I was surprised when you walked in because I'm like year a month early, but that's all right. The only other thing I, oh, go ahead.
Um, going off of what Bruce said, um, as far as, you did make a comment about, is this sidewalk causing congestion? I don't think so. In Shelley's defense, it's the vehicle.
It's the vehicles.
Do I believe that sidewalk should be put in? Absolutely. I don't like that.
You got another tired traffic lane there. I mean, if you'd open it back up, it'd have to help.
So, yes, that, yes, but, you know, it's only as good as people to follow the rules, you know?
Right.
It, it is a vehicle problem, like Shelley had said.